Counsel, if you will come to order. It is 7:00 PM and we have returned from our recess. That was a workshop session that we started at 6:00. We are in regular session. This time, I'm going to ask everybody to stand. It will be led in an opening prayer by Pastor Joel Kele, a bar church. It will be then led in the pledges, first to the American flag and then to the Texas flag, by Councilmember Kurtz. Please stand.
God, thanks for this town. We pray your blessing upon it. And I pray, Father, we would treat people well, we would serve, we'd be good neighbors, citizens, friends. Pray you'd bless the meeting and the things discussed here be things that make Trophy Club even better. And we ask that you'll bless our police officers, firefighters, first responders. Thank you for our teachers, our schools. And we thank you for the public servants that are here tonight and serving our town. And we're grateful for them and pray you'd protect them and their families as well. We love you, God. We thank you that you loved us. And we thank you for Trophy Club and pray that we would continue to work hard and serve and sacrifice, make it a great place to call home through Jesus that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Citizens' presentations, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that indicates the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. We've had one person sign up, and that's Dennis Sheridan. Dennis, please come forward, state your name and your address, and you have the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Dennis Sheridan, One Hillcrest Court, Trophy Club, Texas. Counsel, I have a Texas real estate broker's license. I was a certified graduate builder. I built residences from Beverly Drive and Highland Park to townhomes in Grand Prairie. I have developed single-family homes and developments. I have developed townhome developments. I hope to present some facts tonight, give you my opinion, and ask what my expectations are. I am objecting to the lack of any stagger in the proposed PD-30 townhome units. PD-30, October, excuse me, March 29, 2016 version, page 49. Townhome residential shall be single-family residential units on individually platted lots. This identifies what a unit is. Page 50. The maximum number of townhome, townhouse units is 39 staggered units. This identifies that each unit's going to be staggered. If you review the 2014 preliminary site plan, it shows the staggered on the site plan. In the March 29, 2016 council video, you will see that the intent was that all units be staggered. Last week from staff, I did obtain a site plan and an elevation sheet for the PD-30 townhomes. In the PD-30, the townhome site plan is a staff-approved document. The site plan I looked at shows that the units will be attached and shows lack of stagger, no stagger. The site plan shows six buildings with, using only two floor plans, uses a flush front elevations. Buildings on different setbacks are not staggered units. They are as required by the ordinance. The elevation sheet that I received, the facade of the two-floor plans used into a building has a flush front with repetitive garage doors, gables, brick facades, no stagger, to the front of each floor plan in the building. There are parts of each individual townhomes that are set back from the front, but that's not stagger. Looking at the elevations, it could be construed that identical or very similar floor plans are adjacent to each other. March 29, 2016 council video, the word stagger was put in the ordinance after a significant discussion and a few PowerPoint presentations showing what the meaning was. Putting the proper words into the ordinance that night was restricted because of the wording of the specific council agenda item. Second, Councilman Ryland Rowe, quote, "I imagine and desire some level of assured articulation." That was in, unquote, that was in conversation with Kendall of Green Brick, the developer, townhome developer. And also, so we don't have a perfect straight barrack style. Later on, Green Brick Partner, Carter Kendall, my intense, quote, "My intention is not to have a straight wall all the way down the road." Later on, town manager, at that time, town manager, Steven Sidell, "We have had people make changes to the pitch of a roof because it's too similar to the house next door across the street." A little bit later in the conversation, now, on camera, the video, but you can't hear the voices, there was a private discussion between Bill Dolstrom, an attorney, Chase McCree, the Beck representative, and Kendall Carter Kendall, excuse me, mispronouncing him. Green Brick, the result of which, they agreed to adding 39 staggered units into the PD ordinance. Those are facts. Now my opinion. The site plan and the elevation sheet that I looked at do not meet the requirements of the ordinance, and staff does not have the authority to approve plans that do not meet the ordinance. If you're going to stand at the curb up on 114 and look down into the neighborhood of the townhomes, you're going to see a straight line of townhomes. All are going to be garage doors in the front of gable brick, anything worthy of the army barrack precision. Green Brick agreed to the stagger in front of this council. If an agreement allowing no stagger was made, I'm not aware of it, I would like to know about it. If it was made during the lawsuit arbitration hearings, I'd like to know about it. If it was made prior to that, I'd like to know about it. It needs to be made public, along with the specific law that allows it to supersede the PD-30 ordinance. I ask that this issue be put on the next council agenda for discussion and action. Please, do this in open session, not behind closed doors. And do it, and don't take the shield of executive session on this one. I am available to make a presentation when it is on the council agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. Holly, did we have anybody else?
No, Mayor.
All right. Announcements and reports. Item 2, receive town council manager classes update and provide input regarding the following: Back to Nature event and Spring Family Campout and Senior Synergy Expo. Tom, you have the floor.
Evening again, Mayor and Council. I hope you enjoyed the workshop session and dinner. In collaboration with Keep Trophy Club Wild, the town will be hosting a Back to Nature on Saturday, March 30, between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM at the Trophy Club Park. Back to Nature, as you're well aware, is an event that celebrates great, our great outdoors in the park and Arbor Day. The event will include activities such as archery, arts and crafts, horseback riding, wildlife demonstrations, and we'll have a tree planting ceremony. In-N-Out Burger will be donating 600 meals for the event, and there will be over 15 vendors for the event this Saturday. And in conjunction with the Back to Nature event, the Spring Family Campout will also take place between March 30 and March 31 at Trophy Club Park. The cost is $15 per person, and that includes dinner and breakfast. Several fun activities are also planned for this event, which includes archery, backyard games, live music, a movie in the park, and smores that have been provided by our local State Farm insurance agent, Chastity Murphy. Currently, we have 121 participants signed up for the event, which I think is a record for us. And registration will be closed on March 29, so we would encourage any of our residents that would want to involve themselves in both those events to please come out. And then lastly, the Senior Synergy Expo, hosted by Tarrant County Judge Glenn Whitley, takes place on May 9 in Fort Worth at the Will Rogers Memorial Center. Attendees will learn about services and opportunities in Tarrant County, including transportation, housing, health, support systems, senior isolation, and other topics often needed to assist seniors in living well. The goal is for the guests to leave the expo feeling more empowered and to live a happier and healthier lifestyle. And we're really excited this year. As an added bonus, our Parks and Recreation Department is providing free transportation to our residents for the event. We're just asked that they would register online at trophyclub.org website on or before the April 24, 2019 deadline here for any questions that you may have.
Counsel, anybody have any questions?
Just a quick plug for Back to Nature. It went last year, and it was probably one of my favorite events that we do. Like Mr. Class said, there's a ton of vendors, lots of stuff for kids of all ages and adults to do. Are they going to have the Rock Wall again?
Tony, are they going to have the Rock Wall?
Oh, yeah. Rock Wall, I mean, just the horseback riding and all the animal guys, are they going to be there? There's so much to do, and it's so much fun. I really encourage everyone in our community to head on out there, even if it's just for 30 minutes or an hour or the full two hours. There's something for everyone. It's such a fun time. It's also educational, too. We have a lot of vendors out there talking about wildlife conservation and things like that. So I just, this is just my shameless plug. It was a great time last year. It's always fun planting the tree and shoveling the dirt. I really recommend that if you can make it out there, make it out there.
It's a great family time. And even after shoulder surgery, I did climb the Rock Wall.
You did?
Yes. So come this year and see if I can make it. Because I didn't make it before last year.
Has anybody signed up for the, to take the ride?
Yes, we have had a few signups so far.
And I'd like to actually thank Nick, because he, I was part of that email chain where Nick asked about that, and so I think it was a good idea. So thank you.
And again, we're hoping that our residents will take us up on the, on the offer.
All right. Thank you, Tom. All right. Item 3, receive town council liaison update. Discussion of same Park and Recs Board, March 18, 2019. And Councilmember Fleury is the liaison.
Okay, okay. Well, the big thing, we had been talking about this for a while, Harmony Park, the new playground, Jagger's Journey, our accessible playground, has finally started construction back on March 30. It's going to be about four to six weeks before it's completed, depending on weather. Also, the installation of new wind screens on the tennis courts, that's been completed. April 1 is a big date. Community pool membership, swim lessons, reservations, and trit and swim team reservation, registration opens on April 1. Also, registration for our Parks and Recreation Summer Adventure Camps opens on April 1 as well. So there's a lot of fun camps and activities for the kids. And as we just mentioned, the free shuttle to the Senior Synergy is on May 9. That's going to be 8:30 AM to 1:30 PM in Fort Worth, so we really hope that our citizens take advantage of that. Also discussed, after receiving direction from council and discussing with the Parks and Rec Board, staff will be making a recommendation to council in the near future to create a park on Sheldon Drive. The recommendation will be for the park to consist of a small parking lot, about eight spaces and one handicap space, a trailhead, newly planted Bermuda sod, new irrigation, and a wrought iron fence that separates the parking lot with the open space. Proximate cost is $102,000 to $110,000, and that's based on, of course, current pricing for the materials. And that's about it.
Anybody have any questions on that? All right. Eric?
Did the Parks and Rec Board get recommendations from the local residents that own Sheldon?
Good evening, Mayor. Yes, that's correct. We had two speakers that night and a handful of other residents that showed up as well for Park Board.
Okay, good. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
And actually, I think they were somewhat organized in their statements. So they had met among each other, so.
We just need to make sure that we, anything we do on this is publicized.
Yes. All right. Anybody else have questions? And really, to the park update. All right. We are on consent agenda. All matters listed on consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anyone wish to remove any of the items 4 through 10 from the consent agenda? Seeing no one seeking the floor, I would entertain a motion to approve consent items 4 through 10.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 4 through 10.
Motion to approve consent 4 through 10 by Lamont, seconded by Fleury. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Item number 11, administration of the oath of office and presentation of certificate of election to Mr. Eric Jensen, Councilmember Place 2. Eric, if let's go down front.
Is there something for me to read?
I do. But I was going to do repeat after me, and I was going to read the whole thing.
I didn't do it.
Yeah, but you know I can. Neither could I, so that's the reason. Phil did it last time. First item is the statement of the appointed officer. And so if you would please read that statement, please.
I, Eric Jensen, do solemnly swear or firm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or employment, forgiving or withholding of a vote at the election which I was elected or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God.
All right. Let me get you to sign that. I'll let my hand up here. So you want to sign that, please? And now, I don't have a handout for this one.
Yes, sir.
So, I, and Stato, look at there, she was so good. Come on. What kind of candy was this? All right.
Do you want to do the same thing?
Yeah.
Do I have to raise my right hand?
You do. And hold the page.
Like that's a Bible?
Two things at once.
No.
Renee should come up, though.
It's all right. Okay.
Renee.
Yes, sir. I, Eric Jensen, do solemnly swear or firm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trophy Club Town Council, Councilmember Place 2, of the state of Texas, and will, for the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's take a picture with this. Or do you want to put your back seat? Or are you okay?
I'll have it right here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We should have photo pumped.
Do you?
I don't think it has a place, person. That was just the one you were reading.
There are different, that's now that, that I'll have to re-sign that one?
Yeah, you do.
So you.
Make sure you give me a pen. That'd be such a.
So I don't walk away with those.
Item number 12, remarks to and from Councilmember Eric Jensen, Councilmember Place 2. Eric, if you'd like to say anything, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So many things I could say. I'd like to thank my wife, who's here in the audience. None of us here can do this without a supporting spouse. Renee and I will be celebrating our 24th anniversary next month, and I thank her very much for being my rock. Want to thank everybody that took their time to vote in a special election. It's very odd, and I appreciate the time that people took to do it, no matter how you voted. It's a very important thing that we do as citizens of the United States, and I thank everybody. It's something people are proud of and should be proud of. When it's done, and it's done, we've got to work together. And only working together and not against each other can we improve the quality of life that we enjoy in Trophy Club. So with that said, I look forward to continuing working with everyone as my term on council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. So it has been customary for a long time that we allow other council members to make a comment if they'd like to do so, so we continue to put that on the agenda. Does anybody wish to make any address or talk to Eric? Congratulations. Thank you.
Well, you know, LBJ once said that when the burdens of the presidency seem unusually heavy, I always remind myself, it could be worse. I could be a mayor, and I guess we could change it to say I could want to be a mayor. No, Eric is, I just, I just want to say that Eric has been a good friend. He is a good council member. It's unfortunate what we went through, but like he said, it's over and we must move on and do the job that we were elected to do. So I guess welcome back for the two minutes that you were gone.
Eric, congratulations. I do want to commend you on a well-run campaign, even though it was somewhat short, without maybe as much fanfare as we typically do. But everything that I read that you did was totally positive, and I really appreciate that fact and wanted to say that to you publicly. So thank you very much for that. Anyone else?
Congratulations.
All right. Alicia, did you?
Yes, congratulations, and I absolutely agree. We all need to work together, so I'm happy to hear you say that, and I'm happy to see us all moving on, and I hope we can continue to do so in a positive manner. And now, it is unfortunate what happened, but it happened. We're here, and I think this is a great opportunity to start fresh. It's spring and continue on and power through and try to be as positive and cohesive as we can. So thank you for setting the tone for that.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a remark? Seeing no one wishing to do so, I will move on to item number 13. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the acceptance of the audit of the town of Trophy Club fiscal year 2018 and report by members of the council finance committee that met on March 18. And so Jonathan, were you going to start?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Good evening again. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our auditor. This is Louis Breelove with Brooks Watson. He's going to run through a PowerPoint presentation, and I understand there may be some comments afterward. We'll be available for questions.
Thank you, Louis. Thank you.
Let's see here. Am I supposed to? You're getting me there. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for having me tonight. I'll try to make it short and sweet. I know you have quite a few things on the agenda for this evening. I'm Louis Breelove, Audit Manager with Brooks Watson, and I had the pleasure of working with the town here and being able to run through all the departments and perform the audit. I do have a PowerPoint presentation which summarizes the audit process, the results of the audit, and the financials. So we do perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We evaluate and examine the process and controls of the town, so we look through each aspect of the town. Pretty much anywhere our money's coming in, we evaluate the controls there, the process around that, and ensure that there are solid controls in place, and evaluate them to see where we can provide any recommendations on how those things can be improved. As part of that, we do what's called a risk-based approach. So we perform evaluations over every aspect of the financials and determine where there may be potential risk for misstatements or misappropriation of funds. We also look for such risks as revenues and related expenditures, construction in progress, payroll expenditures and payroll-related liabilities, and then long-term liabilities. Next, we perform compliance testing. So we look at areas where the town may need to follow laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, including such items as Public Funds Investment Act, or the PFIA, and make sure that the compliance and requirements there are being followed. We do our fieldwork where we agree all the underlying, the balances and underlying support. We tie out the balance sheet, and as we're testing the balance sheet, we're testing the income statement as well to ensure that everything is materially accurate. And then we move into the conclusion reporting phase where we evaluate the results of our audit and determine whether it's appropriate and help prepare the report and required communications. Next, this is a comprehensive annual financial report, or also known as a CAFR. This is above and beyond the standard report requirements as it provides an additional level of detail and transparency. So this is the seventh or eighth year, I believe it's the eighth year, that the town has received the CAFR award, and we expect to receive again this year. Next, to cover the components of the CAFR within it are the letter of transmittal, the auditor's opinion, the management's discussion and analysis, basic financial statements, which contain the government-wide statements, your fund-level statements, and the notes to the financial statements, and your required supplementary information, followed by the statistical section. So with the independent auditor's report, there are four possible outcomes. You have your unmodified, modified, disclaimed, and adverse opinion. The town did receive an unmodified opinion, and this is the highest level of assurance that we, as auditors, are able to provide. So that's what we want to see, and the town did accomplish that. Next, a few financial highlights. Total assets exceeded total liabilities by 37.3 million. The town had an overall increase in net position of just over $1 million for the year, consisting of $652,000 in the governmental activities caused by an increase in capital and increase in non-recurring permit revenues, as well as $383,000 for the business-type activities due in large part to operating grants received due to flooding that occurred in the previous year. The town's governmental funds reported a combined fund balance of 17 million. This is an increase of 1.4 million. This increase is primarily attributable to a few factors of $400,000 in hotel occupancy tax caused by new hotels in the town, $467,000 for Parkland dedication. This is a result of fees received during the year. Then higher-than-expected revenues in the general fund for permits and fines and forfeitures by $371,000 and $117,000 respectively. Unassigned fund balance in the general fund was 4.9 million, or 47% of annual general fund expenditures. The town's policy does require a minimum of 30%, so you guys are currently above the set minimum. So that's great. And we always, we always recommend a 25, and you, so you have set the level at 30. So it's great to see that you are trying to be as conservative as possible with that reserve. And then the town's net pension liability totaled 1.3 million as of the year end. This is down from 2.4 in the previous year. That number fluctuates quite a bit year to year, depending on actuarial assumptions for TMRS, as well as how the market does for the year. Next, this is a summary of the town's revenues for governmental activities. There for you is a side-by-side comparison year over year for each category, and I've pulled out a few highlights. So some of the bigger changes, charges for services increased by $350,000 due to a significant increase in building permits this year. Occupancy taxes increased by $132,000. This is due to a new hotel opening in the prior year. Investment income increased by $113,000. This is due to an increased utilization of interest-bearing accounts. And then your other revenue decreased by $876,000. This is primarily due to some non-recurring fees received for the Parkland dedication in the prior year. Then on to the town expenses for governmental activities. Some key highlights for the expenses, the general government expenses increased by $852,000. Some key highlights for the expenses, the general government expenses increased by 865,000 due to an increase in employee retention, outside professional services, and as well as depreciation expenses. The parks and recreation expenses decreased by 116,000. This is primarily due to a decrease in the non-capital projects. And then the interest and fiscal charges increased by 406,000. This is primarily due to the first debt service payments and the 2017 obligation bonds. Next, this is a summary of your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. I will draw your attention down to the line item that says net change in fund balance. Looking to see that each fund, other than the Capital Products Fund, did have a positive increase in fund balance. Capital Projects Fund, while it does show a negative, was actually budgeted for. So all funds met the adopted budget for the year. Next, this is the budget to actual for the general fund. So if you look at the far-right column, that is showing you the variance between your actual numbers for the year and then the final budgeted numbers. Revenues did have a positive variance of 569,000, and then your expenses had a positive variance of 515,000. For a total, after other sources and uses, you had a total positive variance of 413,000. And revenues were, we noted previously that revenues were up due to quite a few permit revenues that were received in the year. So that was a big contributor to that variance. And then expenses had quite a few items that had ended up costing less than had a budgeted for, as well as the timing of projects. So assuming you were able to accomplish everything that you sought to accomplish for the year, this is a sign of a very healthy budget for the year. Next, this is the saving of revenues, expenditures, and changes in net position for your proprietary funds or your enterprise funds. Here, what we're looking for is to make sure that these funds are self-sustaining. So if you look at the operating income, each does have a positive income for the year, and so it is self-sustaining even after your transfers out, your total net change is a positive. So both funds are self-sustaining, and so they're in good shape. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have over the audit report, the accompanying letters that came with it, as well as my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Louis. Just stay there a moment.
Sure.
Anyone have any questions for our auditor? Or comments? I don't see anyone seeking the floor. Jonathan, any, anybody questions for Jonathan or staff?
Mayor, I'd just like to commend our finance staff. This is the true illustration of a team effort. John Zagorski, our finance manager, led the audit process with our new senior accountant, Ernest Gillespie, and April Duval, our chief financialist, was heavily involved as well. So I'd like to make sure they were recognized this evening.
Thank you, and thank you for taking on the additional responsibility of being over the finance department. We appreciate that. So I, did you want to make something?
No, I was just going to echo Jonathan. I've been in several of these, and this was by far the easiest audit and the, you know, great report, and just, just very, very nice. So thank you.
Louis, thank you very much. Appreciate the diligence you showed at looking at things that I always like to have auditors look at. So appreciate that very much.
Absolutely.
And having that. So thank you very much for coming tonight.
It's a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to commend our town manager, Tom Klass. Two, a little over two years, is that right? Obviously coming from a much different background than what he found here at the town. But I appreciate the fact that he worked hard to keep us within our budget and to communicate to us. And as you could see from the financial report, that we accomplished a lot by staying under budget and being able to create for the first time in our history, the fund that I always called by the wrong name, because capital is at the front of it, but it's capital equipment reserve, is that? Capital replacement. I knew I would get it wrong. See, I hadn't broken my record yet. I just know it was capital. I sent an email today going, I've looked through all of these financials, I cannot find that fund. Plus, because we didn't really do it till the next fiscal year. But anyway, I was looking for it. So it is there in our general fund is where those monies we set aside for that replacement, and I'm really proud that this council took that action. As long as I can remember, and being on a council, we have stressed the fact that we really don't want to be like the government that says, it's in the budget, let's spend it. If you haven't spent it by a certain time, maybe you shouldn't spend it. And doesn't mean you shouldn't examine what needs to be done, but that's the way I think a good manager works with the budget and his staff. And so, Tom, thank you very much for bringing us in under budget and keeping us true to what we tried to do. Anybody else? Copies of the audited report are available, and the CAFR, if people would like to have one, they can come and request a copy, and we'll be happy to get them one. All right. At this time... Yes, wait, yes. Yeah, I'm fixing to do that. Yeah, I was headed there. Thank you, though. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept and approve our auditor's report for fiscal year 2018.
I'll make a motion to accept the auditor's report for 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Schaffner moved, and Lamont seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. It is approved. Louis, thank you very much, and staff, thank you very much. Item number 14. Case O AMD 1901, Community Garage Sale Process. Item A, Continue a Public Hearing Regarding a Request to Remove Sections 14.02.25A1, 1402.251A10, 1402.251D of the Temporary Use Regulations Within the Trophy Club Code of Ordinances and Transfer Approval Authority of Community Garage Sales to the Planning and Zoning, from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Town Council to the Special Events Committee. And I think I misstated the first section. First section is 14.02.251. I left the one off, I believe, A1. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our town planner to make some comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this item is to consider amending the Code of Ordinances to transfer approval authority of community garage sales from P&amp;Z and Council to the Special Events Committee. The strategic link for this item is infrastructure and development to foster a business-friendly environment. Historically, two community garage sales are held by a civic group in Trophy Club each year, and they're highly anticipated by residents and out-of-towners. The code requires community garage sales to obtain a temporary use permit through the approval of P&amp;Z and Council. Meanwhile, other special events in town are processed through the Special Events Committee that's operated by staff. In an effort to process all events in the same manner and to ensure that staff can prepare for all the events held in town and avoid miscommunications, this request proposes all oversight of the community garage sales to be moved to the Special Events Committee. On January 8th, Council approved an amendment to the Special Events Ordinance, removing the requirement for P&amp;Z and Council's approval of community garage sales, giving authority over to the Special Events Committee. To stay in line with that, the zoning ordinance should be amended as shown in your packets. P&amp;Z considered this item on February 7th and unanimously voted to table it so that staff would have time to research the appeal process. Staff has confirmed that in Section 1.09.008 of the Code of Ordinances, that as a managerial function, decisions made by the Special Events Coordinator, who is the person of contact and serves as a chair of the committee, that his decisions are appealed to the town manager. The town council is expressly authorized by the Code of Ordinances to hear appeals regarding specific time limit restrictions, such as length of event or frequency of event. Council heard this event, or sorry, heard this request on February 26th, opened the public hearing but did not take action because P&amp;Z had tabled it. P&amp;Z considered this item again on March 7th and unanimously recommended approval without discussion. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments to the code, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. At this time, I fail to state that we open the continuation of the public hearing at 7:36 PM. Do I have any questions of Ms. Payne, or anyone wish to sign up to speak during the public hearing? I see no one wishing to speak. I will then close the public hearing at 7:40 PM, and we will return to our regular session. Item B, Consider and Take Appropriate Action Regarding a Request to Remove Sections 14.02.251A1, 1402.251A10, 1402.251D of the Temporary Use Regulations Within the Trophy Club Code of Ordinances and Transfer Approval Authority of Community Garage Sales from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Town Council to the Special Events Committee. I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2019, 201907PZ.
I've requested to speak.
I'm sorry?
Thank you, sir. Just to confirm, one of the sticking points we had last time was talking about the appeal process.
Yes, sir.
In regards to whether it comes to council. So just repeat what you said a bit ago about the only time it would come to council.
In the ordinance, it says that it has to specifically say that it will go to council. The only time it specifically brings that up is when it's something that has to do with the time, like the duration of the event, the hours of the event, anything that's specific to the time, anything that's a decision that the committee chair would make, whether it's like a denial of anything, that would go to the town manager as, you know, as an appeal to staff.
Tom, you good with this language?
I am. Just to add to that, though, with regard to appeal to council, also the frequency of the event, which would probably be the most significant.
Okay.
Issues, how many times per year that would be appealed to council should somebody disagree with what would be my opinion.
Right. Motion to approve as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Move by Jensen, seconded by Fleury. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It was unanimous. Item 15. Discussion and Take Appropriate Action Regarding the Process of Multiple Readings of Ordinances. I believe our town attorney Dodd is going to talk to us about this. Go ahead.
This is, first came up during the retreat, January. I believe it was brought up as a possibility of having maybe three readings or two readings on certain agenda items, types of items. And we've looked at it, and as I said in the report, the first challenge would be finding out which ones you want to do, which ones we want to have multiple readings on, and which ones we don't. So it doesn't look like we're just picking and choosing one over the other, or things like that. If we did it with all public hearings, it would add a lot, it would add extra public hearings and calendar issues for things like taxes, living taxes during the budget process, during P&amp;Z items and stuff, the items that I've listed there in the, in the report. Another option would be do it just for ordinances, which would be even more items that you would consider. It would add to it. The difficulty is if you have this regulation, and then you have to read them with another regulation and state to making sure everything's done and every box is checked and everything else. Based on that, I think as we've done on several, usually it's planning cases, I think that come up, that get a lot of people in from the town. I think that might have been one of the things that started this for communication or making sure people knew about things. You always have the ability to table it or continue a public hearing, undo a next hearing, next setting, things like that. With that being, with all of that in there, our recommendation is leave things as they are and take them on a case-by-case basis. That's the only way you have that option, other than just drafting a thing, an ordinance to have additional ones or additional readings for specific ordinances or specific actions. And I've looked for direction or feedback or...
All right. Councilmember Jensen, you have the floor.
I agree with Attorney Dodd. I don't see a need to change anything.
Councilmember Schaffner.
So let me ask you this. If, I think that basically what we're looking for is multiple readings for ordinances, correct? I think that's the main thing. So if you, if you have, I don't quite understand the financial considerations, possible increased notification costs. So are you saying that each?
On public hearings.
Okay, so what if we just did it, what if we, what if we did this just for ordinances? So in other words, we're going to, we're going to make a change of an ordinance.
Like every ordinance?
Right. So, so I think that what we talked about in the retreat is the first reading, obviously we discussed the ordinance. We may not make any changes, we may make some changes. The, the next meeting, it's on consent.
For the, the actual ordinance.
For the actual ordinance.
And which ones would you want that applied to? Every ordinance, speeding, traffic tickets, ordinance fees?
I don't know why you wouldn't.
Okay. That's what I'm just, not arguing.
You know, because I don't think that we've ever been in such a rush that we had to get an ordinance passed. And so, and, and then I think we could debate how many readings. I mean, it, it could be, it could be, the problem is, is if, if we pass an ordinance, so let's say that tonight we passed an ordinance that we're not going to allow anybody to park on the street for 12 hours a day. We just decided we're going to do that. We pass that ordinance, it becomes law.
Upon sign, yeah.
Right. So, so then the next meeting, if we have people just come screaming at us, we don't have a, then either we've got to turn around and redo that ordinance and change that ordinance. So in other words, I guess it's kind of like a tap on the brakes. And whether that is, whether that is one meeting or two readings, you know, that can be debated, but I just, I understand what you're saying. I just don't think it gives enough feed, enough time for feedback.
One way, too, I don't know that you could use it on planning and zoning cases, but the workshop we had tonight, if you're looking at an ordinance that says no parking for 12 hours in a row or something like that, you could workshop it, you could have it on a council agenda, and then approve it later on, or whatever the process for that individual issue rolls out, is what I'm saying. Each issue, some issues may take three or four meetings.
Yeah, I understand.
Depending on how heated they are.
I just think that if we have an ordinance...
I, I understand the communication, and the, and the goal is to get people involved and let people know. I, I get that.
Well, it's, it's not so, I mean, it's mainly that if we have a controversial issue that people may not know about, if we, if we tap the brakes, in other words, if we have the ordinance, and then it may take two other council meetings to, to, to actually pass that, we've given plenty of time for residents.
And you have that ability now.
I understand.
I understand. My, my, the, the problem I think we run into is every ordinance isn't the same and isn't as, as heated.
So if, I understand that.
Yes.
But, but I don't, I don't quite get that, that we have any ordinance that is so time-crunched that we have to do it now. So we should be able to plan.
So are we talking two readings, three readings?
That can be debated. I, I just think that, I think that we should tap the brakes. This gives residents time to then, you know, if, most of the ordinances we pass are not going to be controversial, but there are going to be a few. And I, and I understand what you're saying, that we can't...
I'm trying not to cookie cutter all of the ordinance.
We can't just...
Just a lot of the...
Let him finish, please, David, and then we'll go on.
So I would, I would, I'm in favor of multiple readings. And it, it really doesn't matter to me whether it's, I, I think three is perfectly fine because I don't think that we're such in a time crunch that we have to have these ordinances in place.
Okay, so just a second. So I got people signed up, and I'll, I'll come back to you, just keep your thoughts. So I will sign up next, and then Greg. So here's an example tonight. Item number nine is ordinance 201909. It's approving pit water and wastewater fees. So it is somewhat time-sensitive because the mud does there increase. We've got to somehow get it passed to have it in effect at the same time so that when the mud starts billing, because they do all the billing, that we get both pit and town rates there. So I think there are some cases that might be problematic with three readings. Now, having said that, what I asked staff to do, I thought verbally was, I know that South Lake does three readings. How do they accomplish it with three readings, given the fact that they deal in an ordinance world also? Secondly, I think if we were to look at our ordinances, there probably are some ordinances that make sense, shouldn't be made longer. that make sense, shouldn't be made longer. I think what I have heard from South Lake is they sometimes do two readings in one session is how they get to their third reading. So they don't delay it too much, but at least they've agended it. Now, they accomplish that, I think, by placing one of the readings during workshop and the other reading during regular session. Don't know that that fulfills what the intent was, but they obviously have had some issues there. So I, I am on the side that says I want to make sure that we do this right in the sense of I don't want to cause more trouble necessarily. I don't want to cause more public hearings or more advertising necessarily. But I also think that the perfect example was we were amending our zoning ordinance. Well, zoning seems like something that maybe ought to be a little more serious in some cases and maybe be more restrictive. I don't know. But I'd have to look at a list of the types of ordinances. We surely know those over the last couple of years. What's been done? Where would it create a problem for us so that I could make an informed decision? So what I'm looking for is more data to make the decision. All right. So Greg, and then I'll come back to you, David.
I would support the case-by-case situation. I think we'll know if there's something come before us, if it's going to be an individual or a couple of individuals on the street, maybe even a street or a neighborhood, we'll know that. I mean, like the, the tax rate, that's a broad thing. And I would go with two readings rather than three.
All right. David, you have other questions or comments? Or Jonathan?
Mayor and council, I just, one implication of multiple readings, if they were, if it was a broad-based policy decision, would directly impact our budget calendar. So we would be, and which is fine, but, but we would, we would be looking at having discussions with you. If it, for example, if we use the, the all ordinances caveat for the budget adoption, the tax rate adoption, the approval of the tax rule, the, the vote to ratify property tax revenues and the, to adopt the pit assessment rate, all of those would have to be noticed multiple times to meet this policy change. So those typically occur towards the end of September, depending on how we schedule out the budget calendar. So you could look at, depending on the number of readings, obviously, that could be pushed back to beginning of September, August. And the complication on our end from that is sometimes we're still working through budget projections and expenditures and revenues and, and getting those, that information from the appraisal districts. And so that might cause us a potential timing issue as we get closer and closer to that end of September budget adoption requirement.
Thank you. Phillip?
Yeah. I, I, I agree with Greg. It, you know, you, you probably don't need three, but certainly, certainly two would be plenty. But in, on the same token, I would like to see all the different ordinances perhaps go back for a year or two and, and because certainly the mud situation like Nick talks about, we changed that ordinance or we changed that policy back in, or that agreement back in, I don't know, three or four years ago because we, we used to, or the, the original 99-year agreement said 90 days. They had to, had to give us notice. They never did that. And so we changed it that if they gave it to the town secretary within the allotted 72 hours, we would then make the change at the next meeting. But certainly even that could probably, I would imagine, I don't know, I haven't looked at that to see exactly when that rate change changes, but it could be that we have two meetings. I, I just, the, the thing that I want to stress is that we give citizens the chance. There could be some citizen who's in the pit that doesn't like these rates, that wants to speak, that doesn't know we even put it on consent and approved it tonight. And so this, if we tap the brakes for one meeting, we have it on our agenda, we discuss it, and then we come back the next meeting, we put it on consent, it's approved. If somebody comes to speak, we can pull it off consent. Or if we get a lot of comments, a lot of hate mail, whatever, we can pull it off consent. But I, I just think that this, this gives us the opportunity to tap the brakes a little and, and provide an opportunity for citizens to make comment if they want. A lot of people probably won't, but there could be that, that situation. And so I think that this just allows us to get that feedback if residents have it.
So Jonathan had a question for you, and, and you may have, you mentioned notices, that this might require additional notices. It seemed like to me that action we have taken the last couple of meetings where we did not close a public hearing, we continued it, says we didn't have to re-advertise it.
That's my understanding, yes.
So if that is true in these cases that you're talking about additional notices, it seems like there is no additional notice as long as we don't close it potentially. Secondly, it could be one notice that said on this date and this date, we're going to have a public hearing in reference to this topic. So you could publicize one, maybe, but I don't know the laws dealing with publicizing number of days in advance, that that could, you could advertise that at two different meetings you were actually going to have a public hearing on the same topic. So that's something to look at. I don't want to cause more trouble, but let's at least not talk in generalities in some case, but specifics as to where is it workable and where is it not workable? I don't know that saying that I'm going to publish one time, two notices, is always workable, but what if we forget and don't continue it and close it? Then we're back maybe with even a further delay because we missed that publication timeframe.
Most of your public hearing requirements will probably statutory, either under the budget or zoning.
Yep. So.
On those.
Those are the things I just think we need a little bit more. And maybe this is a good topic to, to have more time to kind of work through the issue and give you a chance to get through that. Maybe a good workshop thing, I don't know. Mr. Class, you have the floor.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, can't we accomplish that same goal though, Mayor? You mentioned that just not closing the meeting on a case-by-case basis, depending upon the, the public's response? That in itself would accomplish, I think.
I think you could, other than.
Allow for multiple readings, but on a case-by-case basis without changing ordinance.
But it doesn't fit, no. His, Phillip's concern that says, what if I didn't happen to read the agenda? And therefore I didn't come talk? So we didn't publish it again because we just went, moved forward ahead. So my motivation for bringing this up was to be more open so that citizens have a chance to talk. We seldom have people come, and I don't want to necessarily lengthen the whole process, but just look at it and get my details. So Eric, you have the floor. Let's, Tom, you have the floor.
Should we go by a state regulation on this? How's it determined?
There's state regulations for zoning and.
As far as public readings goes?
As far as public readings, you should, it probably depends on the type of ordinance, other than that we go off our charter or procedures.
The charter is copied, but is there something state-related, though, that put it where it is? Yes? I'm seeing nods of yes. All right. Everybody's nodding yes. All right, great. We're following state ordinance. Look, the same argument, with all due respect, the same argument you're making could be made if we said the ordinance says we're going to do it five times. Oh, but what if we did it six? What if it's the same argument? You said, you said it and you do it, and that's how it's done. I mean, I've only been on the council two years. Greg, you've been on it six. In two years, I've not seen a problem where people didn't know to speak. They've always spoke. The, the latest, the zoning issue is a great indication. They found out about it and they spoke, and we gave them plenty of time and we acted after doing so. There's zero need to change anything.
Phillip?
This is where I disagree with you because of the fact that you, the only reason that those citizens came to speak to us is because it was on P and Z first. But if an ordinance came to us that didn't go to P and Z, then those people, we would have passed that ordinance without any comment, perhaps, and then after the fact, received those comments and not, and had already passed that ordinance. I just don't, I don't understand how delaying one meeting would impact anybody any differently and it would give people the chance, if something comes up, to address us, whether a phone call, thumb, email, and then we could pull that off consent or we could leave it on consent, depending on what we receive. I don't think it's such a burden to wait one meeting.
All right. Been good debate. We've heard pro and con. From my viewpoint, my direction is I'd like some more information. I'm not sure if the rest want more information. We are agenda that we can take action. You could not deal with it at all or you could refer it or table it.
I, I personally would like to have a workshop, like sort of what we did tonight. I think it would be a good topic to get more information and, and discuss further and see the pros and cons and discuss it more. That's what I would like to do.
So because we are agended to take appropriate action, it seems like to me that a motion would allow us to vote on this as opposed to Tom having to interpret how we feel. Mr. Schaffner.
A motion to refer to.
Refer to workshop session.
I'll make a motion to refer this for more information to a workshop session with Meet You Anywhere providing the food, so.
Second, second, second.
All right. I'll leave off that other part.
All right. We have, I'll second that. We have a, unless somebody else said second. Did anybody else say second? I don't know.
I said it like four times at Meet You Anywhere.
All right. So it's a motion to refer to a workshop session, unknown date at this point. Any discussion about the motion to refer? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those approving the motion to refer, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. I think it was unanimous. Thank you, David, and everybody for doing some research on that, and we'll get through that next time. All right. Item 16 has multiple sections. Discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration of the April 9, 2019 council agenda and items from the town council future agenda item list. Item A, discussion of green ribbon grants for beautification along the sound wall of State Highway 114. It's been there for some time. I placed it there originally because Metroport City's partnership was looking at doing a joint project with South Lake, West Lake, and Trophy Club to do a green ribbon program along 114. Part of the delay was waiting for the sound wall to be finished. And now some of the delay deals with the construction of feeder roads along eastbound 114 in West Lake and South Lake that are under design that include Texas U-turns at Kirkwood Boulevard. And so I still think it's worth doing. I would be okay if we just want to remove it from future agenda and I'll put it back on when it seems like it's ready. If there's no objection to that, that's what my recommendation to do is because I can't control all of the aspects of it. Hearing no objection, then Lisa, let's just, not Lisa, Holly, let's just take that off future agenda for right now, and if these other organizations make some progress, we'll deal with it appropriately. Item B, which is item number three, receive an update from town staff regarding entryway monumentation and landscaping of the town of Trophy Club. I think Planner Payne has the floor.
Our town manager tonight.
Good evening. This is an update on entryway monumentation and wayfinding signage. The mayor asks that staff provide options for wayfinding sign locations as well as points of interest that each sign could point, could advertise. In tonight's workshop, y'all discuss the marquees that are installed in three of the five or in entryway monuments, which can be identified as numbers one, two, and four on this map. Number six and seven are potential locations for new entryway monutation if warranted. This is the existing Trophy Wood sign, the existing Trophy Club signs. One is marquee, one is a logo, right next to PD 30, and the Trophy Lake sign as well as the roundabout sign. So that's what we have right now as far as entryway. As for wayfinding signs, potential points of interest to guide residents and visitors are labeled on the map and include one, Town Hall Police Station, two, Harmony Park, three, Trophy Club Country Club, four, schools, five, Military Veterans Memorial, six, Independence Park, seven, Freedom Dog Park, and eight, Trophy Club Park. Potential locations for the wayfinding signs are labeled on the map and include the intersection of Trophy Wood and Indian Creek, the intersection of Trophy Club and Indian Creek at number two. At number three is Trophy Lake and Trophy Club. Number four is Trophy Club and Bobcat Boulevard. And number five, potential location would be Bobcat Boulevard at the water tower at our north entrance. Potential points to be advertised at Trophy Wood and Indian Creek are Town Hall Police Station, Harmony Park, and Trophy Club Country Club. Potential points of interest to be advertised at number two at Trophy Club at Indian Creek are Town Hall Police Station, Harmony Park, the Country Club, as well as Indian, or Independence Park and Trophy Club Park. Trophy Lake Drive and Trophy Club intersection, they can point out Independence Park, Freedom Dog Park, Trophy Club Park, and schools. And Trophy Club and Bobcat Boulevard intersection, we thought it was appropriate to point out Independence Park, Freedom Dog Park, Trophy Club Park, as well as the Military Veterans Memorial. The same goes for Bobcat Boulevard at the water tower. Staff was previously directed to contact local universities in hopes of getting a master's program to design entryway and wayfinding signage for free. However, staff was also directed to focus on park signage and later directed to hold innovatance until PD 30 is further along so that entryway and wayfinding signage does not clash with PD 30 signage. Staff welcomes direction on entryway monumentation and wayfinding signage. I'm available for questions.
Would you go back on wayfinding to sign three? Whoops, sorry.
And of course, all of these are subject to change. These are just ones that we as staff thought were appropriate.
So just as a suggestion on sign number three, I think there ought to be a right arrow pointing to Country Club and maybe Fire Station. Because if you come in that intersection, which way do I go to those is the purpose of it. So got to go to four now. So four included Veterans Memorial, but three didn't. So if I was coming in looking for the Veterans Memorial, it seems like the three ought to have Veterans Memorial also, just a point. Now, the problem with that is you're at the roundabout, and an arrow pointing straight at the roundabout is maybe confusing as to what to do. So that could say that as you're going around the roundabout on the whatever side, as you finish the roundabout, you needed signings that said the parks and Veterans Memorial, that type of thing. And it seems like to me there's no mention of schools. And so maybe that would be good. And for me, if I was looking at intersection four, I think you've done a good job because you point them to Trophy Club Park, which is one direction, and other parks may be another direction in the Veterans Memorial. So that's good. Go to five. I don't know that I had any changes there. Independence, Freedom, Trophy Club Park, Veterans Memorial. Yeah, I don't know that you need anything else there. I think that's good. And did you have, that five was the last one, right?
Five is the last one.
So I, I didn't recognize all of them, but I think if we got further along this. So from my standpoint, I've been trying to push this along a little bit, council, because I see this wayfinding signage almost every day. And I don't think that what we might decide about wayfinding signage would change based on what we might do with monumentation. That's me personally. I also don't think that what PD 30 does will change based on what happens at PD 30, but I could be wrong. So I was just trying to get this kind of documentation in front of us so we could begin to kind of look at it. And if it was your desire to try to move forward, then the next step is try to finalize the directional more specifically, and what do the signs look like? And their options on what those might look like and what the cost might be. So, but I, I really. So, but I really appreciate, Lisa, you putting the effort in this and how you really pointed out to us exactly what you're thinking. I think it's easy for us to visualize what's going on here. So anybody else, Alicia has wanted to speak, and then Phillip.
Yeah, I also agree. I don't know if there's an appropriate location to point out our fire station. I think that would be good. And I don't know if there's an appropriate location to point towards the hospital. I don't know. And also, I really loved our discussion earlier in workshop about integrating our, the possibility of integrating our marquees with the monument entryway signs. But thank you for the great presentation, Lisa. That's good.
Sure. Phillip?
Yeah, I like the entryway signage. I'm not a huge fan of wayfinding signs. I see it in a lot of cities, like you say, Nick, but my kids play soccer, not, they play in the Greater Northwest Soccer Association, but we have to travel to, this weekend, we traveled to Keller, and we go to Ulyss, and all kinds of other places. I always put the address in my GPS, and my GPS takes me there. I don't look for the wayfinding signs in each city to direct me to where to go, and so I sort of lean towards this as a waste of funds to put wayfinding, because I think most people have their phone and they use GPS. I think it's very similar to the discussion we had when we were doing the sign ordinance on open house. You know, people have a list of open houses they want to go to, they use their GPS, they go to the open house. So that's just me.
All right, Greg.
I agree with Phillip. Entranceways is, I think it's important to get done. Wayfaring, all of a sudden, you wind up with signs all over the place. Remember, we had the big thing with the roundabout, we had too many signs, we reduced a whole bunch of them. And I sound like a broken record for the past three years, but I'm big into the entranceways. We have hot tacks that'll pay for them. My personal preference is to have at the four main entranceways, bronze statues of the golfers. We have Byron Nelson, we have Kathy Whitworth, Ben Hogan, and I think at the school, we could put a nice statue of a young golfer. That's, hopefully, we'll get that done in my lifetime.
Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we're having wayfinding signs or not, but if we are, are we looking to make sure that we match up the sign down at Trophy Park? Trophy Park, what's the street that?
Trophy Park.
Yeah.
The one that's pointing to the Dog Park.
Yes. Is that on there to be added and to match?
We didn't add that location. We can surely add it though.
Yeah, I want to make sure if we do wayfinding signs, everything matches, that the signs are already there.
Another location that says Trophy Club Park and the Dog Park is One Direction.
We can get rid of the existing sign and put a new one if we do all this.
Good suggestion. All right, Eric.
At the end of Indian Creek, there used to be a sign that said Trophy Club Mud Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's gone now, thankfully. I agree with Phillip. I don't think we need wayfinding signs. Let's take care of the, let's take care of the other monument signs first. I think we need to put this off for now.
All right, anybody else? All right, so that was item B, wasn't it? Yeah, okay. All right, so let's move on to item C. Was referencing item number four, discussion of and take appropriate action regarding updating the town stormwater master plan. Director Uzi is going to talk to us briefly.
Good evening, mayor and council. In December, we discussed several things in regards to the update on the stormwater master plan, including the verification of the easternmost property line of the town. We talked about agreements and how they would be affected at that location with possibly South Lake at the bridge and the water pass there, how to fund the project. We talked about in that regard, stormwater came up, but it kind of went to the, some other direction with looking for grants. So tonight, I've asked Scott Hubley with Freezing Nichols to come in who I felt could do a much more comprehensive but short program for you to identify the phase that we're coming into that would might get some discussion going and see what direction we might need to go.
Thanks, Tommy.
Thank you, mayor and council. Got a slide deck. I'm not sure if y'all have that in front of you. There we go. So I'm going to cover an update to the stormwater master plan. You see the title here, Skyline Creek Improvement Feasibility Study. Really, the focus of the master plan is looking on a specific part of the channel downstream of Indian Creek Drive. So just a little bit of background, as you recall, we developed a stormwater master plan for you in 2012. As part of that, we looked at flooding along Indian Creek Drive and TW King Roadways. In the 100-year event, that's the standard storm event. As part of that, we looked at what types of improvements to the roadway would need required to pass the 100-year. This is the kind of project area, the limits of the project that's proposed, so the upstream end being Indian Creek Drive and the downstream end being TW King Road. And if you recall, there was improvements made at Indian Creek Drive. So there's a new culvert put in there, there's four barrels. One of the four barrels is blocked off, and the reason that's blocked off is if you open that up, you can increase the discharges downstream into that channel. And so that's really the impetus for this update, is to understand what needs to be done in that channel, so that you can open this culvert and fully realize the benefits of these improvements you made at Indian Creek Drive. So if you look farther down at TW King Road, of course, this is at the boundary of South Lake. There are six 48-inch culverts there today. We provided in the original master plan a proposed bridge size if you wanted to make that pass the 100-year. The key point here is that it's not required to do that bridge to do the work within Trophy Club in the channel. So you could do the channel work, it would still work and function appropriately. This is kind of an optional thing, if you could work out something with South Lake. So the project that we've talked about with Tommy is focusing on this channel. You can see the extents again here. I'm just going to run through the things that would be included. So the first thing is a hydraulic analysis. So we'd update the hydraulic model to understand what's the current conditions, including the new culverts at Indian Creek Drive, and we look at that with the three barrels and the four barrels and understand what are those downstream impacts. And then from there, we'd be able to look at any additional velocities or additional floodplain elevations in that vicinity. I'll, just real quick on this slide, you'll notice that I'm showing the FEMA floodplain. We updated the floodplanes for the city in the 2012 study, but the FEMA map is still out of date, and you can see it's not even completely located correctly in the right spot. The stream center line is outside the floodplain, which is obviously not reality. So that's another thing. So there's properties down here that are probably carrying flood insurance and impacted by flooding that an update to this channel and then reporting that back to FEMA would potentially remove them from the floodplain. So this is a picture of the current channel. This is down on the downstream side, looking up near TW King Road. Another thing we propose to include in the scope is what we call a geomorphic analysis. So that's really a assessment of the stream with a focus on erosion and the stream, natural stream processes, trying to understand, is the stream trying to downcut and widen? How do we incorporate that information into the design to make it sustainable for the future? The other thing is we look at what kind of channel cross-section you need. Do you want vertical walls, concrete? Do you want to do something more green and softer? What's the right approach down here? And then we look at easements, permitting, FEMA coordination, and then the big thing is the costs. So really, the point of this is trying to paint a full picture of the project and what it would take to successfully implement it. And then on the costs, we look at the total project cost, and then we figure out how can you achieve that by maximizing your available funds that you have through the stormwater utility, potential cost sharing, especially at TW King Road, and then we look at what grants would be applicable for this type of project. So that's kind of the scope that we've discussed with Tommy. I think with that, we're happy to take any questions.
All right, Councilmember Schaffner.
Yeah, do you know Tina McMartin, Tina Standard?
I do, yeah, I do.
Her mom lives across the street from me, so.
Okay, that's great, yeah. Yeah, she's fun to work with.
I was curious, have we determined our city limit on South Lake?
Simple answer is no. We've reached into, you know, with Freezing Nichols, as well as Tignol, in researching the documents that we have in place. Fifty percent shows one thing, fifty percent shows the other. We have not come to the valuation of exactly where that line is. We're still searching. The last, or the next possible thing we just need to do is go to, go up to Denton County and sit around in deeds and records and start researching maps, but all the documentation we have, even from the early years here, identify it in the center. And years ago, your roads were county roads and all the property lines were in the center. So if something happened, some kind of agreement happened, we're not able to find its time, but we haven't given up on it. We're going to continue looking.
Well, you know, I certainly support this study because we have done a, we've done several things that Freezing Nichols recommended at that location, but we really don't know, you know, exactly what impact we've made, and now we understand because they tore up some of my property, but the mud has done some work down in the creek, you know, and so we don't, we don't know how that's going to affect stormwater, and it certainly would be nice to, since we have the culvert in there, to open that up at some point, but it would, it would, I think it would be a great time to do the study and then work with South Lake. Nick has a great relationship with the mayor in South Lake, and so I think that that's, and they've had some problems on White Chapel, you know, where a bridge was washed out in a storm event, and so certainly, I think this is the time to do the study, to see what changes we've made have impacted this, and then what we further could do to help those residents along that channel. So I'm all for this feasibility study.
Greg.
Tommy, back in November, after really heavy rainstorms, there were about seven or eight residents that, somewhere on Skyline, I can't think of the cross street, they were flooding in their backyards due to pools being installed and concrete and water flowing. Does this address any of that?
Ultimately, it would, because that's where all the drainage is going to go down, and that's how it's going to function to the hydraulic part of the phase of the work, is to get the water downstream and off the properties quicker. I mean, that's the generic view of it. It would definitely affect it.
So is this strictly in the planning stage? Do we have any long-range plan when this would start or happen?
As far as when it will start, will be up to y'all, and we just proceed from that point. The study would have to be done first. And even looking into, as late as this evening, with some discussions, that may be available through 522 or the professional services funds as a start.
Guess we can't use hot tacks, huh? All right, then I have to speak. I too support getting it updated. I think what we probably need to know is what do we think the costs that's going to be and whether or not that goes to next year's budget or where we would do it. So that's something, Tom, to maybe get far enough along to deal with that. I'm not saying at this point, we go to South Lake necessarily and address the issue because of the property line dispute until that's really done, before I would go further to say the South Lake want to participate in some fashion. I think we surely have a responsibility to let them know if we are going to open up our box culvert, because it's going to affect the flow at some point, and we need to make sure that we don't cause problems for other citizens by doing that. So an updated study is good, and if in fact, the FEMA map hasn't been updated to what the real creek is, if this would help us get FEMA to update it appropriately, then that's probably helpful for those citizens and for us. So I support that kind of moving forward. Phillip?
Yeah, does this not include the Fresh Meadow area, which flows into this, where we've also done improvements?
We would reflect those in the updated models. Yes, sir.
Yep, I support it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I appreciate that. All right, moving on to item D for item number seven on our future agenda list, discussion and planning to deal with a right turn lane and an acceleration lane to turn right and head west on 114 at Trophy Lake Drive. And Tommy, you've got an update for us.
Right. We had discussed that again in December, and what I thought at the time, obviously, was placement of a right turn lane and acceleration lane onto 114. If we look at the map, and I'll try to control the thing, I kind of confused people yesterday when I started using north, south, east, and west. But we've got a two-lane road coming here, south on Trophy Lake Drive, which turns into your third lane specifically designed to bring you onto 114. Now, several things have happened in recent years. I looked back on earlier maps, and the turn lanes here that are identified with a right turn only weren't always there. There were a time where you just went straight. Currently, and for a while now, we've had the two markings with a sign that's about this area here, the stop bar that goes across, and right here in the middle of the median again, is another sign that's right turn only. So what that does, that opens up, instead of them going straight through, that opens up this lane right here to be your acceleration lane. So I've reached out to Text Dot, and I haven't got a response yet. I've talked to several different parties in regards to it, but town staff can come in here and restripe this area, and then also have the state come in and do their section. And at the end of the day, you've got your lanes that you're looking for in process.
All right, Tim? So this is a bit tangential, but because you said you're contacting Text Dot, anecdotally, there are more accidents at this crossroads than anywhere else around, right? I know it's not our, it's considered, well, West Lake there, right on the other side. Is there a way to talk to them to either switch the left turn going north to a green arrow first, or to change something? Because what's happening, I say it at least once a week, and I'm not, that either the person coming, say, from West Lake is in the left-hand lane, he's trying to turn left onto 114 access road, he tries to beat those cars, right? So they slam into each other all the time. I mean, it happens almost daily. Or somebody's coming from the surface road and they're trying to go straight through the lights. All I'm saying is because you happen to have a call into them, can you look into addressing something? Something is not right there. I mean, Pat would know more than, Chief Farada would know more than anybody else, but I mean, there is, I mean, it's, so if we're talking to them, can we get that on the subject to somehow?
Most definitely. And signalization has come up in past discussions with them as far as anything overall to do at that location, especially with the new office across the street coming in. There's going to be more traffic there, there's going to be more people trying to beat the galley of the lane. So there's something that possibly very well could be done there. I just hadn't had a chance to sit. It's hard enough getting a call from them, much less sitting down with them and going over all the issues, but that has been thrown out in front of them.
But maybe if Chief Farada can get with the other chiefs and see how many accidents have been there in the last year alone. I mean, it's got to be 25 at least, I mean, just right there. So I just want to bring it up because it's, every time I drive by there, there's an accident.
Certainly, the statistical information will be helpful in any kind of meeting with them in that regard.
Great. Eric?
So the goal is to allow a right turn there on red.
Going to go north on?
What you're adding here is that right, that right turn, is the goal to be able to go right on red at all times without stopping?
It would be.
That's the goal, right? I do not like this plan whatsoever. There's way too many accidents there. This will create more accidents, because as the chief knows, people don't turn into the rightmost lane. They turn and they go, and now you've got people flying at 60 miles an hour. You're going to have so many more accidents. I would love to hear the chief's opinion on this.
Yeah, and keep in mind, the entire signalization of the intersection would probably change in that regard.
The entire signalization of that intersection is awful. It's always awful. You can't convince me it'll ever be good.
Chief, you're a-
It's terrible. Always bad.
I agree. That, I mean, I think Chief Carroll and I agree that that is a terrible intersection, and it's going to take more than just lines on the ground to make that a safer place.
And even if you put a curb there, guess what? People are going to flip over the curb.
Well, I respectfully disagree with that, but what Text Dot will force is some type of traffic analysis and be able to give us some professional opinions about it. The problem I'm trying to solve is getting people out of Trophy Club- The problem I'm trying to solve is getting people out of Trophy Club faster. That's what they complain about. And this doesn't solve the problem of the traffic light that doesn't seem to work all the time. It only solves the fact that you have a right turn lane that's not up there as a protected lane, even though you have a right turn headed west to come into town. So it ought to be protected appropriately. Now, whether or not people will pay attention to striping, that's surely debatable. I just was wanting to research it, so. Thank you. Eric?
Patience is a virtue. I'd rather people take their time and be safe than speed up and have an accident.
All right, anybody else on this issue? Thank you, Tommy. All right, in just a moment, I'll read the information about our executive session. Phillip, I'm right, we're through except for executive session.
Skip, just skip the.
All right.
Next, the G, the next agenda meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Thank you. So does anybody wish to add anything to the next agenda or to the future agenda list? I apologize. Greg?
Nothing to add, but what I hear is true, that we've finally bought Easter eggs that have candy inside of them.
Wow, times are changing. Well, I'm ashamed to tell you, that would be news to me. But I can certainly check.
My wife comes home with fingers like, you know, and she says, you know, can't we get?
What does that have to do with?
I was only.
Making a comment, but.
I was only promised better eggs this year.
They are pre-filled, by the way.
Where was that on our agenda, Greg?
Eggs extravaganza, right there. Future agenda. I just want to thank staff for doing that.
Okay.
If you don't have arthritis of the fingers, you know, we get people out sick, and I can't work, can't type.
Okay, so Holly, as far as our future agenda list. Item two is getting removed, right?
Yes, sir.
Item three, we had an update tonight. Does anybody want to leave it there? Or just, it did include entryway monumentation. Do we need it there? We're just going to remove it and let it come back as staff gets more data for us? Any decision there? Hearing no one make any comment, I guess I'll leave it. Item number four, discussion take appropriate action, the stormwater plan. So I think we gave direction tonight, Tom, for you to go forward, so four could probably come off, and it'll be on Tom's list. And as far as item seven, as long as Tommy is going to bring us a little bit more data, I'm okay with it coming off before we have a full discussion. All right, anything else that we had on that future agenda list that I almost missed? All right, it is 8:33, and we will convene into executive session for item number 17, pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated chapter 551. Texas Open Meetings Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, section 551-071, consultation with attorney. Item A1, cause number 189681158, Michael T. Sly. Item A2, procedures for pit assessment. Item A3, conflict of interest disclosure. And then item B, section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property to discuss or deliberate the purchase exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. Item one, north of State Highway 14, east of Trophy Club Drive and west of town limits. And item two, parcel between breadwinners and Trophy Club Town Hall. And item four, potential transfer of property. We are in executive session. It is 9:09, and we will reconvene into regular session. Item 18, consider to take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Does anybody have any action to take in executive session?
Yes, we need to authorize.
Authorize additional $2,500.
Yes, sir.
And expenses for town managers to pay the contract to Roger Yale.
Roger Yale, yes.
All right, I have a motion to increase the amount of money allocated to the town manager to spend for outside legal services, about $2,500. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, it is approved. All right, nothing else?
Motion to adjourn?
All right, it is 9:10, we stand adjourned.